Was that good?
May 14. Approval of the agenda, recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for May 14th, 2025 be approved as circulated. Counselor Evans, Counselor Rich, all in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. Adoption of the minutes, recommendation of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on April 23rd, 2025 be adopted. Counselor Rich, Counsel Bailey, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we've got delegations to start with. The Sickmoose R C M P detachment quarterly update Sergeant Murray McNeil. Take it away, Murray. Thanks for being here.
To introduce the other officer in the room, this is my supervisor Sean Bailey.
Welcome, Sean. We'll have to talk later. Just kidding. Got it.
I'm called a district advisory and CEO. He looks after Sickmoose detachment, Revelston detachment, detachment in that corridor, Samar detachment. So I'm here today to do a couple of things. The first is my usual quarterly presentation. So this will be the fourth quarter of the 2425 report. And I'll go over that and I'll go over some of our year end totals in relation to property crime. That's been a topic of interest here, so I wanted to address that. Once we go through that, then I will talk about our on-call response. There was a petition made to counsel for concern from some citizens of sign a petition concerning what they believe to be increased level of property crime in the community. So I went over the numbers on that and I'll present that. And then once I go over those numbers, I'll talk about our on-call response, what exactly that is, what hours we do that, who's responding, what we're responding to, to give some clarity to that situation. So we'll begin, I want to run my first report here on the quarter. If you want to move this slide forward to the next page, we'll talk about our road safety initiative. Standard things through January, February, March, there's our totals, trying to tickets and warnings that have been issued by the detachment members. It's giving 172 for the quarter, up slightly from the same quarter of the last, last year, 159. We have five members working, which results in an average of about 11 stats per member per month, which is above our target between like the seat to hand, by having the numbers quote and pull some cars over, do some enforcement and some public visibility. The impaired driving initiative continues to be on the increase. These numbers are big for the community. Very high, high impaired drivers, could be immediate roadside prohibitions where a driver, driver's license for 90 days, they have a high blood alcohol level in their, in their body while driving. They also had their vehicle impounded as well. So 10 for February and eight for March, total of 27. That's, that's very high. That's quite significant. You see there were 17 for the quarter previous year and six for 2023. So they did take these there. Collisions, we had a very tragic collision that we had very recently in February. And the pickup truck, which was coming westbound and the young driver unfortunately turned to make a left-hand turn trying to get to a residence and he turned into the path of the incoming semi truck. So we had two deceased from that, two injured. There's charges, most likely, we're still investigating the matter. It'll have to go to Crown for consideration, but we're, we're most likely going to be moving on a charge. I amended under the motor vehicle law for that. We did rule out immediately at the scene alcohol and speed were not factors in the collision. The investigators did a very commendable job with everything that he gets faced with. We had a large number of cattle that were in distress, injured. We had one get out of the road. Of course, the young people was the main concern. They were in very bad shape. And we had an excellent response from the fire service and the road rescue unit, which made that, you know, a very, very bad situation, but we managed to look better for the people involved. Injury collisions, nothing too bad. January 31st, 1:30, we had a vehicle head-on near Mitchell Park. We worked on SUV, crossed double solid, rounding the corner. We had three taken in the hospital with non-serious injuries. There was heavy still at the time. And how it was closer, less than an hour. Luckily for us that day, highway one was open due to bad weather and the weather was so poor that they weren't even dealing with the rock scaling. So the traffic just continued down highway one. Breaking enters, this of course falls into our property crime numbers. So I'll go over that in detail, what we have for that. We had two residential breaking enters to a property in a light bar area. And we arrested a man after he broke into a residence that occupant or resident was known to him. They had a previous relationship. He broke in there and he was armed. It became a very tense situation where the residents inside the house had a confrontation with him. Police were called. We arrested him. He's been held in custody and he remains in custody of a 41-year-old man, facing a slew of charges from that incident. And then in February, we had two youths. They broke into an unoccupied house. It wasn't even that late. It's kind of the evening and one of the officers attended that. He went inside the house, saw that he's insecure and found both youths inside the house, arrested both of them. The parents were called and showed up and took care of the youth. No charges in that. Theft of vehicles, move on to that thing with the property car. So this was a, this was kind of a crux or the origin to think of some of the concerns of the community. January 27th, we had an incident where a crew of criminals, I'll call them, that's what they are, they came out from Highway 87 and they went to a property on Two Mile and they opened his unlocked vehicle and they were able to start the vehicle. I'm sure the fob was in the vehicle, a modern vehicle, you press the brake pedal, hit the start button, if it starts, fobs in the vehicle. And then you off, you go with the truck. So that truck was stolen and then that truck was used to come into Sickmoose and went to a couple of streets, Emlock and the other chaplain Crescent. And they went up and down the street opening unlocked vehicles. And there were several unlocked vehicles and they were able to steal cash, whatever was in those cars. No other vehicles were stolen because there's no other keys in there, but they did make off with property, several vehicles. I just checked before I came here to address council. That truck has still not been located. The place we're found in Calvary sometime later. And the truck is outstanding. So the, it's been stripped somewhere. I'm sure it'll be in a, in a shop somewhere in El, shopped up, sold, whatever, but the owner's been paid out for that. So that, that occurred early in the morning, I think it was about 3:30 in the morning. And I'll, I'll reference that again when we're talking about young officers. Drug trafficking, we still have some good work done in the drug trafficking area. I mentioned here in a previous report, that massive amount of cocaine was seized off the highway. We had the traffic members come up from the lower mainland. There was over 70 kilos of cocaine seized in one, one instance. But in this particular instance, they had traffic stopped for speeding driver arrested. Person in the vehicle had 40 grams of fentanyl, 200 grams of cocaine and a resident in Kelowna was arrested in that. They're doing a civil forfeiture application, meaning we're applying to have the vehicle seized and turned over to Crown as a, as a tool in the proceeds of that crime. So we've had some success with that. We've had a few vehicles seized and turned over to Crown, some cash from some of these recent seizures. So I anticipate that one will probably be successfully won. And this is just our stats. You should be seeing the numbers. Those are the breaking enters, the three of them at the top of the quarter. I discussed the two on Live Barker and the one on Fiddles Street. Three from zero, hit zero in 2024. And you see the impaired driving, 27, up from 17, even 17 significant. So that's also a large number. Everything else kind of comes, goes along, no major increases there. Collisions are relatively the same thefts, five this quarter compared to 10 theft of vehicles, four and four. So nothing's jumping off as increasing. With 500 calls for service compared to 429. So a little bit higher in calls for service numbers. And then the next, well, I, I just did this one to show because it's our year end, we're showing like April to, April 2024 to March 2025, our R C P fiscal year. And these are the numbers for the community. So in a, in a 12-month period, we had 10 breaking enters this year compared to four previous and seven the one before that. See, the theft numbers are up from 2022, 23, but down from last year. Theft of vehicles are down from last year. Theft from vehicles slightly down from last year. Emissives are almost the same. So we had 110 instances, 120 the previous year, 102. So there's no substantial increase in the property crime that we've experienced this year in the community. It's slightly down from last year, but it's not, it's not rampant, it's not exponentially increasing. Kind of tailed off my last slot there, resources. We have one constable who does remain off duty for injury. We do have a constable that we just got most recently, about six months ago, Constable Warby. He's signed off. He's a full, full member. He's passed his group field training. So he's fully on board with us. And I have confirmation from our staffing that we're getting another member, an experienced member from the Williams Lake area. So his transfer has been approved and he will be coming down, he will be back for the injured, the injured members position. Because we don't have a definitive return date for that member. So he's coming on board to assist us with our situation. So I have another, you have the next report of the after hours.
Yes, sorry, I'll be at the end. Murray, would you like counsel to ask questions on the first report?
Yeah, sure, we can do that. Yeah.
Go ahead, Counsel Rich. Through the chair. Thank you, Murray, for being here. So we will have seven full-time working officers in our community. Is that correct?
Six. So six would be the full complement. Myself as a sergeant, one corporal and four constables. That's our full log base.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna, one more question if I could through the chair. We lost three boys in that accident. There were four. And, and just to acknowledge for the families, there were actually three boys that died in that accident. So I just want to put that out.
Yeah.
So three out of the...
Very bad.
Yeah, just because families are listening and, and one of the boys was a 4-H kid and, and they're part of our community. So we did lose three there. So I just wanted to put that there. Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I'm just, I guess, one other thing because I've had quite a few people ask me about the incident. Sorry.
For that one, yeah. It's only double for telling. We had, we had the, the driver survived and the...
The other three dies.
Passed behind and survived. And then we had one, one deceased that was seen.
At Crazy Creek, all three boys died. I can discuss it with you later, but I know, I went to the funerals. We lost three.
Okay.
And they turned. It wasn't, it wasn't any, like, you know, I mean, it was drivers, whatever. But I just want to acknowledge that for the families. Thanks. Counsel Bailey.
Yeah. Just a quick question because it was something obviously discussed in the community was about the, the recent shooting that happened around, I guess, the, the legacy area. And I just wondered if you could comment on that. I noticed it wasn't in your report and I just, yeah, kind of acknowledged that that did.
So again, that was another major, major fall here. I can get, make two arrests in that. So I can discuss that. We had a report, it was in the afternoon of a shooting down by the Grand View Shores Legacy Building. Officers were dispatched down there and when they arrived, there was no one on scene, but they quickly determined who the intended target was. And I'm not going to name that person's name, but they were known to the police. So we ended up speaking with that individual and we got a description of the vehicle. That description was radioed to seminar members. It would be anticipated the vehicle maybe going in that direction. And then an astute seminar constable saw a vehicle kind of matching that description. They began to follow that vehicle. The vehicle didn't stop and other officers were coming to seminar. They saw where it invaded police and then we called in the dog and what we call the emergency response team. They did two successful tracks, found two suspects and interest on them. We held them for bail hearings. Charges were approved. One suspect remains in custody and the judge released one on several conditions. He's no longer in progress, but one was released. So yeah, there were criminal charges approved on that. And that's rare, for an instance like that, to, you know, to honestly result in an arrest because we don't have a lot of information at the time. And everything worked very well in that case for the information to get relayed and the members to find that vehicle and then make those arrests and do that. So that was certainly a success story. Unfortunate that that happens, you know, we've experienced some violent crime in the community. We've had three homicides since August of 2023. And then for that to happen, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a touch on it because I, I know that's something people did talk about quite a bit. It is quite abnormal, right?
We didn't need releases on it. I wanted people to know what was going on. When we made the arrests, that was done. And then I released the name of the, of the person as well. So that was good.
Yeah. Thanks, Murray.
Murray, thanks. That was great work. I just have a quick question. I mean, what can we do in, from, from our seats and, or do you know of anything that's going on? Because we definitely have a catch and release system. We have somebody that tried to shoot someone and then we just let him out on the street again to go, go do what he does for a living, which obviously we know what his living is. So I guess the question is, what can we do from here? And is there anything that you know that is changing in?
Well, we, you know, we experienced that when we had the homicide, the Jackson homicide. And I met with you on that matter and it was a similar situation, but in that instance, the person was released and we had to continue to gather more evidence. We work based on what Crown, when Crown is satisfied, when Crown is satisfied that we have enough evidence to defend the charge, then they approve the arrest and, or the detention of that person. So in that case, it was again, more, more good police work to gather that evidence that Crown required and to keep that individual in custody. And in this case, we had, we had good evidence in this case as well. And they approved the charge. The, both suspects were held in custody for a number of days. And then I think on the third bail hearing, a judge released one person. And that's the judge's decision. There was nothing that the person did to do to prove that. The judge does what they will on a bail hearing. We just gather the facts and put it forward. I can just say that those two that we caught that weekend were in campus the previous weekend. And it's similar crimes, right, where we caught.
Yeah, the system is broken. Thanks. Yeah, the system is really broken and it, it needs to be, it, you know, it needs to be fixed. You just, we can't continue the catch and release program. It's a waste of time and it's, go ahead, Counsel Bailey.
I just want to, and, and I think it's, it's hard sometimes to have people fully understand where the problem is, right? And, and I mean, I personally, I see where the problem is. It's, it's the courts that are releasing people that you catch and you have evidence on and go and then you go ahead and catch them again. Perfect example, right? And I, I do think this requires, as the mayor said, some public attention from elected and you need to be a squeaky wheel on this too. I think the public in Canada is already a squeaky wheel, but the more that we can talk about it and not hide it, I think is important. And yeah, it's a perfect example. And I didn't know that, but you know, that fact that they were in Camluts and then they came here and we had a shooting in Sickmoose. There's a direct result of, I would say, careless actions on behalf of the, you know, the judicial branch. It puts people in harm's way. So yeah, thank you anyways.
Kate.
So this report is trying to explain our after hours on-call service. So if you can move the next slide. Yeah, that's gonna be hard for people to see, but I have it in front of me. So I can go over it as well. So the detachment works on on-call operational readiness in the hours of 2:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the morning. And as Sean could attest, that's a common practice in small detachments in the R C P for communities of this size. It just provincial detachments do not have the officers to police the community 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But that comes when a municipality typically gets over the 5,000, 10,000, where they're paying 70% of the costs, basically. And in large municipalities over the 15,000, they're paying 90% of the cost and of course, they're receiving 24-hour policing. So we attend, we get called out. We have dispatchers in Kelowna when we're on operational readiness and they, they take any 911 calls and it's, it's warranting a call out for a police officer to attend. They call us. And we, the Sickmoose R C P officers, we're at home, we're being compensated. We get paid for this extra duty. We have a police car at home with us. We have our full uniform, our firearms, everything and we'll tend those calls. So what I wanted to show is for the year, what we were getting called out and how often we were getting called out. So you can see we're getting called out four or five times a month, sometimes less. April, you see three, May four, June, one, two, three, twice one night, one, two, three, four, five. And you can see what, what times they're scattered. It can be anywhere, 3:00 in the morning, 2:30 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning. But this is what we're getting called for. And I highlighted the yellows are the property crime because the, the report, people were mentioning they were believing that property crime was, was getting much higher. So we had May 22nd, a break-in enter to a business. Two members got called out for that. That was a cell service station. Someone attempted to, they broke the glass in that. They were going to try to steal the ATM. We attended that. That was an unsuccessful attempt. And then in June, we had the Jackson murder. Two members were called out for that. An arrest was made in the first instance in Samar custody. August 2024, we had the fire to the United Church. Fire Department attended that and we attended with the fire department. You can see the rest of them. You know, we had suicidal persons, shots fired, traffic collisions, domestic assaults, mental health calls, suspicious person, animal call. So it's, it's kind of all over the place as to what could come in. January, we had the break-in enter. That's two members. That's where the guy was arrested for breaking into Live Barker's custody. And then we had January 27th where the guy stole that truck and then those two streets that I mentioned, through the unlocked vehicles. So that generated some files because we got a couple of documents. And then February, a couple of calls and that's, that was that for, for that. So April 23rd, 2024, that's the, you know, the previous year, the one we're just talking about. You can see a couple of calls for April and then right down to July, August, September, October, there's a property crime file that highlighted that truck was stolen and was located in Samar. Now we've got collisions. We're attending a sudden death in the middle of the night to assist the coroner. Checking on the wellbeing of the person, a couple more collisions, disturbance, a mental health call, domestic arguments. collision. Crowder, it's true, that's a drunk person. More domestics. So I tried to do a graph here to, actually what our callouts actually look like. You can see the property crime callouts. So the first lighter blue is 2023 to 2024. That's the, the past year. And the dark blue is this year, 2025. So you can see, yes, property crime is up, but up from, these are callouts, of course, from like one, two, five. And then our persons is slightly down. Those numbers are also low too. Non-criminal would be what I was mentioning, mental health, sudden deaths, things like that. That's the majority of the callouts. And then collisions. Because if someone calls in at 4:00 in the morning saying there's a speaker, they're not going to send a police officer out to attend that. Where if it's traffic, it's going to be a serious matter. So a collision or something like that, that requires the police to attend that. I did a couple of pie graphs. So 23 to 2024, 2,049 calls for service, 30 of them of those 2,049 calls were warranting a callback. So we're 30 times in that year, we had, okay, come back and deal with something that required immediate detention for sick moose for mental. And next time, this year that we just covered, 39 times. So we went out from 30 to 39 times and we had slightly more calls, 2185. So the, I guess the message I want to, want to say to the mayor, council and the community as well is property crime is not rampant in town. Like there's instances where things happen in any community, but it's not, it's not on the rise. Like the numbers don't lie. Those are the numbers. And you know, we, we come out, we, we attend this, these situations as they arise. I don't want anyone to think that within the hours of two and seven, that there's no police service for the residents of the community. Because that's, that's false. That's not the case. We take it seriously. Like those members that are, are on-call, they're, they're at home and they don't have the, of course, we're all a bit sleeping at that hour anyway, at, at 2:00 in the morning. But you can also be on-call if there's only one member on duty, say at 5:00 p.m. If there's one police officer on duty, another police officer has to be on operational readiness to respond to assist that officer. We'll always have our, our, our other fellow officers in Samar attend if an emergency situation. But we also have to have someone else to attend to help that Sickmoose police officer. So the members have to take on an extra, an extra duty, an extra, we'll call it a sacrifice to, because if you're on-call, you, you can't just go and get groceries out of your shift. You can't go to a movie. You're, you're at home doing whatever, mowing your lawn or whatever, but you have your phone with you and you have to be near that police car to come in and respond. And as you said, we're promising. Does that give a bit of a clearer picture?
Thank you, Murray. Yes, it does. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Rich. Through the chair. What is our call-out time then from two to seven? What, how, what is our average time to get a R C M P officer out to Sickmoose by call?
I would say 20, 20 plus minutes. To the time where I'll get ready. That officer has to get out of bed, put on a uniform, get in his car and attend. So yeah, in the 20-minute range.
Thank you. Counsel Bushel.
Yes, the chair. Yeah, Murray, just wanted to say thank you for, you know, your, all your reports. They really tell us, you know, gives us a good idea of what's going on in the community and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Murray. And I think 20 minutes is, is pretty good because you can be sitting on the other side of the tracks on Hillier for eight minutes and, you know, come and be on-call and coming into town or be out at Malacca. Or as the Enderby detachment, they look after Lumbee and those surrounding areas. So I mean, you can't be sitting on, you know, everyone's doorstep 24/7. So 20 minutes, I think, is, is, and...
Yeah, it's in that, it's gonna be in that, that range. I've attended some calls very recently. The one on Riverside from 2019, that's the one that really stands out in my mind. That was where a citizen was being assaulted. Intensive murder charge was approved and we, I was here very rapidly over the fastest drift between Samar and Sickmoose. As I call, warranted it. But in that instance, I also assured that the Samar members were there ahead of me because they were in their police cars in Samar. They, they got there ahead of me, assisted in that situation too.
Excellent. Counsel Bailey.
I just maybe want to ask a question that I think is on quite a few people's minds around prevalence of drugs, drugs crimes. And I, I know you touched on it here a little bit, but I guess there's a perception that this is increasing. And I wonder if that is the correct impression or if that's not.
We've increased our, our seizures of it. We had a couple of trafficking charges approved and not all of them from the highway. We had one that resulted from a resident who was in town, was staying in the immediate Sickmoose area. We had one that resulted from a resident who was in town, was staying in the immediate Sick Moose area. So, yeah, we're seeing, I would say we're, it's probably safe to say we're seeing drugs, yes.
Thanks.
So I have, I have a, a couple of points and then I have a couple of questions. So just, I'm just wondering what we're doing about Lake Patrol this summer?
Yeah, so you may have noticed the boat's been watered, it's been serviced, is ready to go, I've got the approval from the Marine, I'm on that. We have three operators in the detachment, myself and two of the constables are licensed boat operators. So we can go at any time to respond to that, I need two members on the boat to go to a call. So if we do get a call, then one of those three operators has to drive the boat and we just get another police officer to go with us. So it'll be in the water, it's been in the water for a week now and will be there till after Labor Day and we will respond. Now, to go to active patrols, that's a matter where we're gonna have to have some overtime. And Southeast District has given me a budget for that, I, money won't be of trouble. There'll be finding members that want to do the patrol, so there is a budget for it. I'll use it myself on certain occasions, but it's a voluntary thing, they had for patrols, like someone has to sit down, I'll ride the boat and they have to have one of those boat operators to go with them, so. I'll tell you how many times it's gone out, keep a log and.
Would the members be happier to go out on a boat patrol if it was on a houseboat? Just checking.
Like, I, I've operated two boats since I was a constable, like I enjoy it.
Yeah.
And it's something aside from the normal, it's just when you work, if a, if a member's into the heat of the summer and he's working fifty-plus hours a week and then you say, hey, do you wanna do a boat shift? Then sometimes the answer is no, sometimes the answer is yes, so. But yes, it's important to have the boat out in for public visibility as well.
So just a couple more things, I know that you're still going over to the school occasionally and having chats with the kids and that's great. And the other day I asked you which, because of all the, the scams going on and the phone calls and the people knocking on the doors. And I know that Lana did a session at the Senior Center last year. I'm wondering if we could set that up again where we have a senior awareness, you know, what to watch for, who to trust, what the signs are, lock your doors, lock your windows, just remind seniors because they are so trusting and everyone, and advantage gets taken.
Yeah, I did that media release about this lady that was taken advantage of, she lost a fair amount of money just recently through a phone scam, so yeah, Lana's got a presentation prepared for that, Lana's my spouse, she's a reserve constable. And she did a presentation last year that was pretty well attended at the Senior Center. Doing on a Wednesday when there's a lunch, attendance is a bit higher, she'll do her presentation after the lunch is served. So yeah, we knew that again.
Perfect, thank you. Counsel Rich. Through the chair, and I'm not sure if this is a chair question or a dean question, or are you a question? But at U B C M last year, we were promised two extra police officers a year ago. Yeah, we sat in that meeting and we're told that we were getting that, is there any follow-up on that?
Well, Sean, he's, he's Kelowna, so.
I don't remember promise for two, I never.
Lord.
Okay, I was there, but I can't reveal, if, if there was one.
Yeah, he literally said, you're getting, Sick Moose is getting two extra within the first five minutes of our conversation.
I think that's not happening right now, so I know that Murray's working diligently on a business case to try and acquire another provincial body. At present, the province pays for, I think it's hundred twenty-one hundred, we take position. So I think it's twenty thousand, maybe. And each detachment in the province is gonna be for additional provincial positions. For instance, West Kelowna is now splitting from Kelowna, connecting to Pasper Nine position. C K wants three positions, Four Thousand wants six positions, so everybody's gonna be for the finite resource. And it's two business case and direction from the CO. Police Services Branch, Soul, and then the, the, we're still to come to fruition, so they have the posted, so. Murray's working hard, he's done a business case, paired numbers to other detachments of similar size. And I approve of it, and our boss, the chief superintendent, she also approves, but it's, see if a long shot might be a bit dramatic, but based on seasonal variances here and highway, et cetera, I think that's the chance. This business case, you're one member, one constable.
I'll, I'll take one, I appreciate it, I appreciate all the hard work, that's fabulous.
And I can, I, this week, you know, against the grease, I would continue to ask your worship every time you're at U B C M, is to hit the CO, say, hey, is this you, is this a topic about data, agree? And sold it.
So in follow-up to U B C M, we did receive a follow-up letter and Dean and I met with RCMP a couple of weeks ago via Zoom call and to, to support Murray, because I mean, we can't, but we discussed our growing community, we discussed our location, we discussed our bridge, we discussed, you know, several things that are, that are going on in the community and in support of, of getting Murray what Murray's needs here in town. So we are, we're doing all we can in the background to, to help.
We had a member, as most people in this room are aware, Reserve Constable Piper, who he was putting in forty hours a week.
Retired.
Very regularly, and he retired, must deserve retirement. So, yeah, that's, that was a loss felt because we didn't have that extra coverage. So getting this body that we're requesting, that would give us back to the, kind of the staffing level that I became accustomed to by having him around. He was that, that seventh member on the, on the schedule.
Yeah. Counselor Evans, sorry.
That's okay, your worship, the question was answered by the statement, going right to the CO at U B C M.
Perfect, okay.
So one, one point, going back, Counsel Rich, to the, you're talking about the fatal, fatal collision in Craig Allagane with the, with the cattle truck and the.
With the four boys going to Crazy Creek.
Four boys in that truck and two of them are deceased, two who survived, the driver survived and the boy in the backseat survived.
Okay.
So only, only two, two fatal. Not three. Took me a while to remember, but you're, you're, I see in your comment, the whole time I'm up here, like, oh, there's two, two deaths in that.
Great. All right. Anyone else have any questions? Murray, thank you, Sean, thank you for being here, Murray, thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate it. And we thank you for all that you do, you and the members and for the, the detachment here. Thank you.
All right. So does anyone have any questions for me from this perspective or?
No, I don't. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Just, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't wanna put you on the spot, I thought you were. Well, I, I thought, well, I mean, since you're here and I'm glad that you, yeah, I wasn't sure if I, can you just talk a little bit about the management system that you have? Because I, I do think there's a little bit of a, you know, maybe this is a bit of, it's not fully known how the R C P works, so you oversee the region, maybe just kind of explain, I guess.
Our, our divisions divided into four districts, in each district, we're Southeast District, obviously. There's a North Island and Lower Mainland District, that's run by a chief superintendent or an ACOM, which is in Vancouver. We have a superintendent and an inspector and that's an advisory, and seals or district advisory and seals is what my position is. And each advisory and seal is assigned several detachments to be responsible. So I oversee Sick Moose, Sammern Arm, Golden and Red Stone. And so like the province, our district has a thousand and eighty-seven members, so we sort of just disperse the supervision accordingly. Like that's, we have a Daniel posted in Kamloops and the rest of us are in Kelowna. Two are in Crest, one's in Cranbrook and one's in Creston. So we're kind of spread pretty thin, but we're traveling all the time, speaking to detachments and communities. Entertaining councils. Carol, am I answering your question?
Yeah, so that's good, I guess I do have a follow-up in terms of how does the RCMP construct the budgets within these divisions, right? Is it, oh, okay. But is it based on, 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 or is it based on, you know, territory size or is it kind of all of it?
Like, it's, what Murray started alluded to, the over five thousand scenario, like if you're policing freely or if you're at seventy, thirty or ninety, ten, so I, that's not my daily, no, so. I just, I will highlight one thing about the on-call piece, because I know that was some concern for some people in all communities. We don't get called out first by dispatch, so a dispatcher will be sitting at the comm center and get a call that might warrant a member being called out. So that dispatcher will contact a divisional duty officer, inspector, like a person in a white shirt that's sitting down in Vancouver, who will likely speak to the complainant or dispatch to determine if they're gonna call members out. So I supervise Golden and they were getting an incredible amount of calls for trafficking uh, non-police related and the members were burning out, not sleeping. Driving up to Rogers Pass in the winter for a semi with its four-way flares on. So I asked the divisional duty officer to cease those callouts and use the partners, Modi, Parks Canada or what have you, just to reduce the calls and prevent burning. I've also, because of the shortages of all the, uh, restricted schedule, members don't work past nine P M now. So they're working from eight to nine and in the night, there's no one working, they're just on call, just because we're trying to preserve the resource, right? So it's, it's a very bleak for policing right now, just with respect to trying to find people that want to do this job. And it's the best job in the world, generational mounting, like third generation mounting. But not a lot of people are gonna hand up and say, I want to do this. So we are competing with Calery, Vancouver, Surrey, with everybody for resources, so it's getting better. I learned today that recruiting is coming back to the division, because currently it's set out of Regina, which is national, which makes no sense, because we feed most of the, the machine, the recruiting machine from V C and then we're sending members to Newfoundland or what have you, so we're gonna have more say in where we post members, because we're recruiting candidates. It's gonna be a slow trend to get there and, yeah, like this team here, I'm gonna commend Murray, his team is like in pairs, they have some dogs out there that anything's moving at night, they're stopping. And they're getting huge success, taking repairs off the road, locating drugs or gun and weapons. His numbers, the numbers here are, I hate to say it better than some other numbers in other detachments along the trans, so. I'll echo your comments about the new work.
Can I just get clarification? So the, and I know the, the training program is based out of Regina, so you're saying that most of those folks that are going to Regina are from the province of British Columbia? Like the highest number, yeah?
Yeah, the big theaters for the RCMP are the centers, so the Lower Mainland, Toronto Region and Ottawa Region, because of population. So most of the recruiting is focused in that area where it's good fishing, you're gonna catch the people. So we're bringing it back to the division where we could send people to Prince George, to Sammern Arm, to Kamloops to do recruiting, local recruiting and hoping the members wanna come back.
Perfect, yeah, okay, no, that sounds great. Good. Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, Trishawat Volunteer Search and Rescue, Steve, big show to follow.
Steve, I've been up here this, we're on behalf of the Shu Shaw Search and Rescue, I've been a member for Luke is our resident of the Trishawat Volunteer Search and Rescue. Um, yeah, I haven't met, I met you, yeah, of course, and yeah, I'm Luke, I'm the president of Trishawat Search and Rescue, I've been a member for sixteen years or so, and I've been the president for kind of volunteers now. So it's a big part of my life and a big part of what I do and proud to be a part of a really dedicated team out of Sammern Arm. And it kind of came to our attention that we were looking at our stats and a big part of our callouts are in Sick Moose and this area and so Steve and I were talking about it. We thought that maybe it was prudent to come and just reintroduce ourselves to, to this room here and just remind everybody that we're here and who we are and exactly what we do. So we have a short presentation, it's kind of goes through who we are, where we operate, some of our teams and some of our capabilities. So just a quick territorial acknowledgement that we operate out of the lands of the Squamik people and we're proud to live and work here and work together. And on that note, I will just say that we actually work quite closely with the Squilax, Squilax is blue, and in the little Trishawat band out in Squilax area and that they have an emergency response department recently and it's been a really rewarding experience and something that's been created on a capacity building side on both sides of tables. Next slide. So we're a group of thirty-seven people, a bit professional for all volunteers. We are dedicated to system requesting agencies where required. We are called out by EMCR, Emergency Readiness and Climate, Emergency Management and Climate Readiness. We respond to many different types of scenarios and we have a multiple teams that we'll go into here in a minute. Your training, constantly at all of those disciplines and I'll look at some, I'll show you some of our stats here in a minute as well. Next slide. So this is our last year's commitments, just folks from stats from our database. So four thousand hours on training events, ninety-two similar training events, twenty-six hundred hours on sixty-seven hundred operational tasks. So those are callouts for us and, and then in order to run a society, as many as you know, that takes a lot of time and energy as well. So fifteen hundred hours on meetings, public events, administrative duties and whatnot there, so. We're fairly like a small group when you look at some of the other teams in the, in the province. We have five managers, Steve is one of our, our star managers, critical to every call out that we do. The team leaders, sixteen ground search team leaders, we have a Winter Mountain Response Team and that's the team that spends a lot of time in Sick Moose in the wintertime and we've gotten to know Murray quite well through our callouts and Sergeant Piper from before and all of that, it's a rewarding experience, so twelve out of the response team members, we have a rescue boat with eight certified members there. Four teams with water rescue techs, twelve rope rescue technicians. We have a tracking team and then there are weapons response first daters. And of all these, well, of all these different teams, the, the rope rescue technicians, those guys are training almost weekly. That's a very highly skilled and technical discipline and their, the amount of time and training they put in is, is immense. Next slide please. This is our call-out area, it's more or less the boundaries of the CSRD area, cut off at three-belt gap, we don't go all the way up to Golden. Yeah. But as you can see, the District of Sick Moose as well within our call-out area, so we do share yeah, backend of Hunter's Range with Vernon, but for the most part, most of the sleds and coos areas are within the Trishawat Search and Rescue call-out area for sledding and then pretty much all of the watershed area of Trishawat Lake. In order to facilitate our calls, this is our command vehicle, it's essentially a mobile office. They're full of mapping capabilities and communications. We run all of our searches from this vehicle on scene. We have Starlink internet, so we can keep in communications and our mapping software, we use the South, the Star Topo mapping software, which is whenever we get a call, search managers are very diligent and immediately creating a custom map with all the information that we've done with it. So before we even get to the hall on our callouts, our phones or iPads or whatever we're using, we've already got a map, we're already getting some information, it's situational awareness and what we're doing, where we're going and how that works. So all of that is run out of this, we can track everybody's phones, so we help track everybody who's. Yeah. Uh, next slide. Well, let's go through some of our teams, I mentioned the rope rescue one and I'm not a team member, but it's your teams, because these guys, this dedication is huge, just a couple of photos, the, the bottom two and the one on the fairly recent callouts, that was the one from Ashton, the tragedy incident we had recently in last month, this training exercise up on Mount Idaho and yeah, you know, the, the amount of dedication and confidence you have yourself to go over a two-hundred-foot cliff in the middle of the night. Confidence in your team, everybody and the dedication around that as a volunteer, it's commendable. The Swiftwater team, so all of our rivers around here. I wouldn't say it's one of our highest call-out areas, but. I wouldn't say it's one of our highest quality areas, but it's uh one of our more special, very technical, obviously um. And initial response and the kayaks that they use and all of their gear um. So that's and we get a lot of mutually calls because our team is well recognized, is very capable. And so we end up uh doing mutually different accounts by the water team. Uh this is our rescue boat, it's a five foot uh thunder jet uh outward uh. Rescue vehicle or rescue boat. Um their flat water rescue boat team. Um so it's Trishawat Lake, uh as you all know, you have our C S R here, yeah. The old Coast Guard auxiliary and so we've worked with them. I do a lot of cross training with them um. Uh Bruce Whitehead and I are, you know, the president are very familiar with each other. We try and get at least over the water a couple times a year together. We've done a lot of mutually calls together. Uh the difference between us and them um. With this, our, we have the search management capabilities, but we also can trailer this boat and take it to the other lakes. And so we've been up to Adams Lake and. Uh we've got mutual aid calls on this boat as well. So it's not just focused on only on Trishawat Lake.
So just to sort of clarify where the division lines are, there's some. Medical emergency on the lake, R C N S R will typically take that. Uh there's a missing person on the lake or. Soon missing and will typically find, take that on until the body's been located, in which case uh R C P divers may come in.
Your mountain response team, uh this is uh where most of our calls end up. Mostly for missing or injured sledders. Um Al's head is the. Primary target for a lot of our call out areas, but we also are sort of borders um off in the Malquai area for the ski touring area. And um that's a a call a few years ago, I think it was right at this time, where we were set out at the seventeen. Hundred fifty K parking lot, uh looking for three missing steers that had made it back at night. So very technical, uh most of those are at night calls, uh it's like five o'clock in the evening when somebody showed this and showed back up and. And um that accounts for, as I mentioned, uh the high amount of our call out volume. Uh tracking and ground search team, um another skill set that we have five members that do a lot of training on. They're confident to see up on tracking. It's a kind of place into a lot of our searches and a lot of different areas. Next slide. Um we're also kind of the C S R D's uh ground army when it comes to evacuations. So we're the ones that go and bay on the doors and and hand out the evacuation alerts and orders uh when they come in in case of uh. Slides or wildfire events typically as we've experienced in the last few years. Fire's. And yeah, sure, yeah. And then another, um we spend a lot of time, um. You get a question calls for responding persons, persons with cognitive dysfunction, missing children, uh you know, elderly Alzheimer's. Way for various reasons and um concerned family members. And so uh a lot of time this goes into urban searches as well. Uh and then this is one that's popped up a lot in the last few years. Um and so we do uh the assists. Assist our same P and evidence searches as well. Um so we have, you know, we're trained in all the different set of search techniques. Um evident searches, it's popped up a few times in the last few years. It's a higher uh member of it's there.
I think those are more and more strange, so they're.
Um and this slide in here is just out of straight out of our database, that's the greatest picture, but it shows. Uh kind of where a lot of our calls end up and I just wanted to highlight uh the bubble on Sycamore's, you know, sixty seven calls. This is a, I think this was a five year look at the last uh our call out lines, but um. And this doesn't obviously include outside of the region and some of the mutual aid calls, but uh. Yeah, between seven and six, we have such we spend all our time and uh. We're out this way a lot and I think the next slide will show a bit of where those land, right? So again, this is a five year look. Um but winter sports, more rest, essential sled calls, um that's our highest subject activity by far.
So in terms of call loading across the province, we're pretty much right on average in summer. In the winter, I think we're top three teams for calls with rental stove.
Uh yeah, I don't know if you wanted to see any of those other, but um again, I mentioned that our database, uh we use this software called D four H. And so it's uh all information we do, I remember everything we do goes into this. So it's very easy to pull stats and have a look at that. If there's any specific questions, I think I can follow up with that as well at certain years. Um our resources, we do require quite a bit of gear to do all of these different disciplines, so. You maintain some wheels or side by sides, give a rescue boat a response, we have T transport vehicles, we have our um. Well, their initial response vehicle, it's kind of carries all our gear, um mobile plan center, which you saw a picture of um. We have a couple quads, we've got four e-bikes and then the SAR hall to put it all together. And so. This is one that obviously there's a lot of money goes into maintaining a hall in a building and uh we're fortunate to see some money from the C S R D. And the province has kicked in the last few years and made that possible, but um. Yeah, the star hall costs us about a hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain and um. You know, as we're all volunteer and uh we're always looking, searching for funds. So um that's part of our message today is to see if uh. If there's any, I know there's never any additional funds, but to see where we could lend into your protection services budget, it's. I think there's a next slide talks a little bit more about this, yes, so um. We do get task reimbursements, so on task, so you know, we do get a bit of money for our vehicles and um. A small percentage. But it's not a lot of money comes into task reimbursements, but a twenty percent of our annual total expenses um.
Covers the minimum to keep people in the vehicles and lights on and all.
And so the eighty thousand dollar for government C S R D. But when we first started getting that, our hall costs were about sixty thousand dollars a year, but those now escalated into a thousand dollar range, so. We're falling short on that funding. That is, that has been a ten plus year commitment, so it's been um. But so it's kept us alive over the last ten years, over the last decade. Um but our expenses are going up and um. And but fortunately, the B C government has kicked in in the last five or six years or so, we're seeing some some money do that. Now that funding is not guaranteed, we feel the C S R D money, um money is guaranteed, which uh helps, but um. We just never know from year to year where the government grants are gonna land. I think there's one more. Yeah, so funding, so we do get, you know, there are private donations that come in and we do apply for grants. Uh rotaries kick in a bit of money here and there. We have our annual fundraisers that have gone best. Uh things in about ten or twelve thousand dollars. Um we do first aid services for kind of off road. Um events such as the Salty Dog, it was past weekend, it's fat plus games we're involved in and if. Events here and there, but um as it says there, our funding is never guaranteed. So it does make it challenging to run a society at times, but. Oh, yeah, just uh thank you with um. Yeah, you know, we do, I understand that probably what I think it's about ten percent of your budget and something goes to protection services. Uh buying a new uh. Fire truck, they're about four hundred thousand dollars. You know, our our resident people's aren't quite that much, but they are expensive. Are you gonna pick up with a box in the back of a vineyard into the hundred fifty thousand dollar range? Our initial response vehicle is at a stage of being replaced and and. It's just, uh I guess I'm just trying to highlight the need for funds and that um. Your essential services for the community, especially the Trishawat, Sycamore's is very much a a part of the Trishawat and a very much a part of what we do. And so um I put a plug in for uh consideration of Trishawat Search and Rescue when it comes to budget time and see if there is a. Protective services budget to. Oh, keep this going.
Yeah, I would add from a snowmobile perspective, I think the whole industry really has a safety net provided by search and rescue that often. Or in some cases, I think just the tourism of the province. I mean, any help we can get is appreciated, uh certainly.
Great. Thank you guys so much. Great information and uh a lot of great educational. Value for those that are that are listening. Um council question? Oh, let's go to Bianca first. Oh, okay, sorry, Ian.
No, by all means, Bianca.
Let me first.
Oh, so we do contribute, so part of our C S R D requisition um is for search and rescue. Um and I looked today, so it's just over eleven thousand of our requisition goes to um search and rescue, rescue specific. Um you've stated eighty thousand, C S R D has like a hundred and thirty five in their requisition. Is that you're eighty and then it's split off to? Other recs? Oh, R C N S R, shit.
Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, I just had a a question about task reimbursements. Um what does that mean?
Okay, so uh going back a little a task, basically anytime a missing person call or or any sort of call comes in. Uh but typically we go to our C M P, B C H S, uh we get a task number and then they request mutual aid. In this case, our task has begun, that's numbered, um and that is reimbursement directly for the resources that went into that task. But we keep a log of how many kilometers went on each vehicle, how many people went out, how many roads got used, every little piece of. All of that against the made a D F C R.
So that's not coming to any of our volunteers, that's just coming back to the society to pay for the use of the vehicles and the gear.
So I I and and yeah, I don't know all the funding um side, but that that seems a little low to me in terms of if you're going out. You're doing all these um activities even on behalf of some of the other agency that you only are able to get twenty percent back. I I wonder, is there, is there something there to be looking at in terms of, I mean, we just went to Silga and we had a. We we had a um like a resolution calling on the province to actually appropriately pay. For the services that a lot of these volunteer groups are doing. And and I wonder if you've ever had any of those conversations. With some of those provincial agencies, because I do feel like there is a huge gap here where the province needs to be stepping up. Um as as a more senior level government with a lot more money, or have a lot more access to money than. Yeah, maybe what they are doing.
Oh, for sure. And lobbying is part of it. Um and a lot of uh B C S R is a great organization for us. That's kind of our governing body. Um that uh oversees all of the seventy eight teams within the province. They lobby it hard and got us the government grants that we're getting. Again, they fluctuate and they're not guaranteed that that is some money. Um we last year, um met with Bolomov, Minister Bolomov with their E M C R, just not wanting to disturb that. Ministry anymore, but had that a very conversation, you know, saying like, this is an essential service, uh funding is critical. This is what we do, like we need, and we need help at times, right? So. I think the message is out there um. Yeah, I agree.
I think it could be more. The overlooked thing is all the volunteers, if you would ask.
Oh, yeah.
Pay everybody on call. Would bankrupt the province, just isn't the money for it, so sort of how much can we ask for it?
Right, but you you don't have any secured funding that's annualized every year from the province? It's just grant, like case by case grants.
Yeah, they look at our our capability, the number of calls we've had, the number of people we have, what services go through by, and then they have a formula and we get money. Yeah, but that's only been in the last five years or so.
Okay.
A grant that goes out to the province and then the teams have to figure out. They're dropping out or you get more capable, all of that can be addressed, so. We don't know exactly how much we're gonna get. We have a fairly good idea to get funding. That's but exactly how much that is.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Bushell.
Yeah, through the chair. Yeah, thank you very much, guys. You guys, you know, you and your team do a great job and uh I've been involved in in it for quite a few years. And kind of stepped out of it just recently and, you know, I just, you know, when you guys, we call you, you're there and and it's not just, you know, you got a. A huge team behind you and they all gotta drive their own personal vehicles there. They don't, you know, they don't jump, jump in a bus or anything. So there, there's a lot of money that's, you know, you guys are managing and uh and they're, I think game is on to something. There might be a. Or uh a way we could, uh you know, maybe just you get together and have a little meeting and try to figure it out and work with other. Other groups and see if we can come up with some way of funding, yeah, because it is, it is expensive to to operate a crew like that and the. The amount of people you guys have showing up that night after night and, you know, look at the numbers there, it's pretty, pretty huge.
Yeah, tourism is a big, big thing in the Trishawat, right? And so we'll start our enter and um. So what we have lots of fun as a tourist here, right? If our C N S R is critical to having a lot of the safety on the lake. Before our C N S R said that was us, that was, as the call volume was huge, you know, we're helping out B C uh and the service just on the lake. It was burning out our members and that was, you know, so when our C N S R came on board, that was a game changer for us. Um allowed us to focus on these other disciplines, you know, we still have the boat because of the region, but. Um that ball, that volume has definitely gone down, but yeah, tourism is a big.
Bianca.
Um I just want to note, so the ministry that um they get their task numbers from and do all the um reporting to. Is the same as rope rescue that E M C R um would be the same ministry that are. Being towards. So if you want to drop that in there when you talk about it, you can, it's the same ministry.
Is it, first of all, I want to thank you guys for all that you do, your dedication and your selflessness and. You're out there when people are are calling you in the middle of the night while they're having fun and you're taking care of them and that is. That's amazing. So thank you for your service and thank all of your members. Um. Is there an opportunity and, you know, you go back to our C M SARS and I go back to the houseboat days. Um and when our C M SARS came on board, we did was we charged. Houseboaters an extra five or ten bucks on their houseboat invoice. And that looked at, that money was then given to um our C M SARS at the end of the year. So is there an opportunity for like sledders, you buy memberships, is there an opportunity there for maybe to tag on a? Because that's, those are high numbers for sledders and I know that, you know, sledding is huge and it's, it's a growing industry and it's gonna continue. Right? So the need is gonna remain there and remain high. So. Is maybe think of opportunities like that where you can tack on that extra five or ten bucks on a, you know.
Yeah.
A passer.
Yeah, it's, it's tax base, right? So it's the, it's how we get our funding to the C S R D, those are tax, that's taxable dollars and. And a hotel tax, I guess, that would add it, would be added to the community, something like that, so. Uh yeah, huge, huge opportunity there, but.
And yeah, and there's got to be a way, but anyone else?
Yeah, through the chair, you know, Steve, like when, you know, our snowmobile industry and and the and the members. And you you also have the, you know, the the regular day day passers. Um you know, it's all messaging and and a lot of those people, we all know they all seem to have a lot of funds. And they're always willing to help and but they don't know to help unless they're asked. So it starts to get in, if you start. The messaging this year, like now, and keep on it all summer long. And uh looking for ways for fundraising and before you know it, someone's throwing a vehicle at you or, you know, like we did when we were looking to. Find groomers, you know, some of the uh members step forward and, you know, donated for groomers, you know, so that's, that's how the groomers. So a lot of the groomers purchased as well. So it's just something to think about and I would be happy to, you know, sit on a committee or help. Help, you know, figure out how we could fundraise somehow and whether we hit the members up or the day passes or, you know, talk to Rex sites and trails and, you know. You know.
Yeah, it's something I brought up with, like you said, Rex sites and trails and the B C Snowmobile Federation, that I think those organizations do really good things. But again, it's all the recognition and some financial support that that search and rescue gives and sort of that underlines safety. So um again, B C S F's under a lot of change rate. And I haven't gone on a traction on that, but that is sort of the conversation. In terms of our club, this year we had to fundraise directly for the search and rescue team and then. We contributed twenty five hundred dollars this year to the, you know, British football, so um doing what I can locally and trying to sort of spread them.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, dedicating, you know, getting donations, like the sled group gets a couple of sleds donated. Perhaps that's something that. Perhaps that's something that, you know, that some other, some dealers would want to be involved in. Go ahead.
Yeah, and maybe, well, maybe I'm asking a wrong question here, but when, when you go out on a call and, and let's just say somebody was doing something they should not, and they got into trouble and you come and you, you do what you do and, and get them out of the hot water that they found themselves in, is there any, do you charge anything for that? Is there a fee for that? Is there some recognition that, hey, you know, the user or unfortunately the person that got into that trouble, there should be some sort of voluntary contribution for that work? Or is that just not generally recognized?
No charge for search and rescue services in British Columbia, and that's done on purpose.
Right.
We want people to make sure that when they need to call us, they call us, that they've got, they've got that financial disentiment to do that. With that being said, we do get volunteer donations from subjects on occasion. Would say it's common, but it does happen. But yeah, that's been a topic at debate for years, but the, yeah, it's, it comes down to we want people to call when they need help. We don't want them to.
Well, I.
That's the model that BC's adopted.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because you are a volunteer base, you're obviously not a government funded agency, so it, it just, I mean, you're doing an extra level of service that's very much needed. Yeah, anyways, thank God, and I certainly see the, the other side of it. I, I, I would just hope that, I think those folks hopefully are writing you a, a check of thank you at least.
Yeah, well, yeah. No, I don't know, like we're, like, a big part of what we do is assist PC ambulance service, so like the ambulance service will go to the end of the pavement, do everything else.
Right.
And back to the ambulance, so can think about how many forest service routes there are in our province, just in our region alone. Those are, that's us. Our CMP goes out on some things, so they don't go out the road very far, but most times.
So, just one more, so when you discuss this with people in government, I mean, ambulance service, government service is a core service, it's something that taxpayers pay. Like, so they go up to the payment, well, if it wasn't for you, how on earth would you get that person out? Like, is there no recognition at this central government level that this is not just a, a nice to have service, it's, it's actually become a core service? Because, what would they do?
Until a few years ago, there was very little recognition, as I mentioned, that, you know, there's that grant that is coming in for the last five years. And that's helped, don't get me wrong, that's, that's been huge, but that's, that's a set of it at this point, yeah. And they've talked about rolling search and rescue into the fire service protection agencies in that system, but it's, you know, seventy-nine teams across the province, it's like, I guess it's, it's what they think about is the dollars.
Right.
Hey, Luke, Steve, thank you guys so much for being here and thank you for your service and everything that your team does, so. Thank you, thanks for sharing with us.
Thanks, good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we are going to BC Timber Sales referrals. I think Nicole, you're going to be addressing this, thanks.
Yep, through the chair, thank you. Okay, so we have two referrals that were sent to us from BC Timber Sales. One is for a road deactivation just above Two Mile, and then we have another for two new roads and some cut blocks. This first map here is showing the proposed road to be deactivated in yellow and then a description of what those activities could look like. And the next map, these lines in red are the proposed new roads. One more map. These are the proposed cut blocks in green. And then this map just shows an overlap of the new roads and the cut blocks that go together there. And the last map I think I did was just showing, oh, sorry Bianca.
All right, I'll share the screen.
Oh, that's okay, yeah, be good to see it. An overlap of all of them, so we've got the road deactivation, the new roads and the new cut blocks. Um, so I know there's been a bit of history with BC Timber Sales and I spoke with Felicia from BC Timber Sales and just gave her the heads up that we would be bringing this to the committee's attention. As a reminder, we met with BCTS in August of last year and we just got, just talked about auctions to keep deactivated roads open. And after today's discussion, if there's any kind of direction for staff, we can take that back to Felicia in our referral response to them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Questions, Counsel Bushel? Counsel Evans and Counsel Bailey.
Through the chair, yeah, thanks Nicole, that's great mapping and shows you exactly where the cut blocks and the existing roads are. Um, yeah, we, last fall, we were supposed to have a tour with Felicia, but unfortunately it was an election, so they couldn't leave the office, you know, that they kind of, it's the rich adopt or something, they all have to stay home or something. But anyways, we never got, we never got on our tour and we were going to actually tour the yellow deactivated road that goes from Two Mile around to Owl Head. And that also is in the area of our bike, bike trails, so it'd be kind of cool to overlay our bike trails in there as well, but that active road there, we, I think we've been on two search and rescues, one fatality on the canyon at, at Sycamuse Creek there, that they actually were able to drive their truck right up the canyon that night and, uh, search and rescue and, uh, and work from there. And I think we did it on two occasions a couple of years back. And then, of course, that road actually crosses the fire break that they used at Two Mile for the fire. So it's a very, very, you know, well-used active road and to decommission it would, would actually hamper any kind of, you know, fire trucks or search and rescue vehicles going in there unless they're, you know, side by sides or, you know, I mean, they're, they are, when they deactivate them, they're pretty aggressive and sometimes you can't even get through them with a side by side. So my, my hope is to be able to use them for, for, for emergency purposes and for, for recreation, because it is our, you know, that's what we're, you know, Moose's known for, so, you know, I don't know if we could still facilitate that tour with, with Felicia and see if we could get them here just to do a quick tour. I'd be, I'd be up for that one.
Thanks, Counsel Bailey, Counsel Evans and Counsel Bailey and Counsel Rich.
Um, yeah, I, I read this and, yes, I agree with Counsel Bushel that I'd like to take that tour, but, um, I mean, my gut says that I, I prepare a motion that I'd like to make to, um, to deal with this because I agree with Counsel Bushel that this is vital. It's not just a luxury and I've seen the photos of when they decommissioned roads and it would make it so difficult for someone needed help. So I've, I've, I've got a motion here if, when, when you'd like me to read that.
Go ahead.
Um, so motion on road deactivation and emergency access. Whereas shutting down these roads and negatively impacting outdoor recreation and tourism, both important parts of Sycamuse's local economy and whereas the roads in question are critical for emergency response, especially for wildfire suppression and search and rescue efforts above the community, be resolved that District Sycamuse expresses opposition to the proposed road deactivation and be a further result that the District Sycamuse requests these roads remain open and accessible for emergency purposes and recreation and be a further result that District Sycamuse is willing to explore if we need to, maybe options of maintaining the roads if necessary to ensure continued access for public safety and community benefit.
George, you got a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Bailey?
Great job, Bob, that's awesome. I supported a hundred percent. And I was going to just remark on deactivation, hate that word, I don't think it's deactivation, I think it's booby trapping. I think that's literally what happens when they want to quote deactivate, and what's the other word that they used here? Which is, I think is entirely misleading, rehabilitation or something. I mean, that's just not what happens. I mean, the reality of it is, it's making it dangerous. It's not deactivation, it's not rehabilitation, it's digging a trench and making it dangerous. And I think I a hundred percent support Bob's motion. I don't think we should be supporting any of this. I, I do think there's a lot of validity from a safety perspective to have these roads and to have these trails. And I don't know why on earth they feel like this is a great policy thing is to deactivate these roads. For what, right? I get that there's probably some environmental concerns, but overall, in terms of us having access to critical backcountry and getting rescues in there and a whole bunch of other things and recreation, you know, that, that doesn't make sense to me. I think leaving them makes a lot more sense, so yeah, I, I think Bob's motion is bang on.
Thank you, Counsel Rich.
Yeah, just through the chair, a hundred percent, Bob, appreciate it and that's exactly my thoughts and, and like Counsel Bailey and Counsel Bushel, we don't need deactiva, deactivation in, in these backroads. This is vital to our community for safety and also for our recreation. And we've been up in those roads for, for a hundred years and, and it, it, it's really a part of our town.
Um, just before you, Bob, I just want to ask maybe a staff question. Uh, for them to deactivate these roads, does that take a liability off of them? Is there, so that's the, so, but if they don't deactivate the roads, then the liability falls to BC Timber?
So there's two parts to it, so BC Timber Sales is responsible for those roads. They also have provincial legislation that requires them to return them to forest production. So a lot of these roads, when they talk about rehabilitation, they actually till them and plant them to get them back to a natural state. These roads are rebuilt for the purpose of access to cut blocks. Once the harvesting is finished, they replant those blocks. Part of the rehabilitation is to deactivate the roads and rehabilitate the roads and wherever you can, they work to return them actually to forest land. So that work is a part of that process. So not all of these roads are intended ever to be long-term roads, short-term roads. So ones that have connectivity is certainly, you can express those, some of these roads are spur roads. They never go anywhere except to where the harvesting was taking place and maybe there's some conversation about some of the roads being deactivated and supporting that piece, but some of the ones that provide critical links being maintained. There's also different formats of deactivation and other jurisdictions have worked with BC Timber Sales, particularly around Revelstoke. To have deactivation allows snowmobiles and side by sides to move through, because a lot of it is preventing four by four trucks and people going into camp and so forth. So there is deactivation methods that are out there that may be more friendly to some of our recreation.
So back to Dean, is there a way that BC Timber can leave it and back out of the liability and the liability goes to owner or user, user risk rather than, is there a way that we can?
Well, there's, there's a number of ways, so they do deactivate it to a certain extent, they just don't fully deactivate it to it. And they put signage up, which gives them protection and liability. The key part of that that I think gets forgotten is they don't maintain them anymore. So they no longer go in there and take care of these roads. So what happens if you don't fully deactivate it? It's left as somewhat of a hazard because these roads deteriorate, you start to get washouts and so forth. So there is a protection for the general public, they have a responsibility for. So it's not like these roads are being deactivated just for no purpose, they don't maintain them anymore. So there is a risk of, of problems there.
Counsel Bushel, or sorry, Counsel Evans and then Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I mean, just to comment, obviously if it's wildfire season, we would all back that that road is shut down so quads can't go up there and create, well, obviously we understand there's reasons why that points of the year, you gotta shut the road down. But if there is, if there's a way to talk to them, like Dean is saying, and come up with a different deactivation in the sense that, that maybe we just, trucks don't go up there and stuff, I don't know, but I'm just, I just think that it's, it is a vital link to a lot of things right now, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's a viable, Counsel Bailey?
I, I still feel like it's a vital link. I, I still feel like, you know, we talk a lot about climate impacts, fire, and then you want to take out access to backcountries where you could potentially fight fires earlier. I, I just don't see the sense in it. I, I see that this is something that has been done in the past, but it needs a rethink. And I get that they want to limit their liability, I understand that, but that doesn't work for me when it comes to recreation and everything else. I mean, let the insurance companies figure that out, the province can figure that out, but it's, it's, it can't just be, and, and I guess I would have more faith in this rehabilitation or whatever they want to call it if I didn't see pictures constantly of them just digging a trench and posting a sign and say this road is deactivated. Well, that's not safe, that's ridiculous. So it's, it's, I guess if they did the job fully and it was fully rehabilitated and they planted it again, then we'd be having a different discussion. That isn't what's happening, right? It says, it does say here, it could happen that way, but in reality, they're making some of these passages very unsafe. So until they actually have a, I think, a better plan to deactivate and make it safe, that I don't support it. Just putting a sign up and saying, don't do it, does not make the public safe. And if it's all just comes down to because they want to get rid of their liability, I get it, but I don't think that's in the public interest, so I definitely supportive of Bob's motion because I think that's in the greater public interest. And I think as we go forward, we need to start considering that we need access into the backcountries for a lot of different reasons. And it's not just for recreation, it is also for safety. Community had a very, you know, traumatic twenty-twenty-one, all right? And, and you take a look at where some of these roads are and we might need to use them again for wildfire response, so.
And I agree, and I, I also agree with Bob's motion. I just don't want
Yes.
your liability to fall in the District of Sycamuse if somebody, God forbid, gets hurt on the trail, like. So, and obviously BC Timber doesn't want it either, so there's got to be, there's got to be a, a user at your own risk clause of some kind, right? So I guess, I don't know. Okay, Counsel Bushel?
Well, through the chair, the other thing we discussed and we had a meeting here years ago with Rexites and Trails, and when we were applying for the, for the Owl Head Bike Park years ago, we also talked about a tenure, an area tenure, recreational tenure for that area. And at that time, they were indicating that there had to be a motorized lift, like a ski resort. You know, it had to be that type of tenure. And because this area here, if, if, you know, it's, it's such a, I don't know, unique, so close to Sycamuse area, it, it, those roads up there, they're used all the time for, for recreation. But, you know, with outdoors roads, they would have, I know, I know they did some, some fairly quick work on Owl Head when the fire was happening, but that's because the roads were already in there and they were able to get equipment in there pretty quick. And now the roads are there and I see how, you know, over the years in, in the snowmobile industry when they, they do a deactivation of a road, that if four years later, they're back in opening it up again for another couple that they didn't plan on. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a waste of money to deactivate it when you know, and you look at the overhead map, that there's still good, you know, still good timber in there. And they're, I mean, they're going to have to access it sooner or later. And then just the other thing too, I had, I had a call this morning actually from a fellow in Bayview and concerned about the trees behind, behind his house. And it's just like, that whole area up there is, is a tinderbox and it's, these roads give you access to, you know, to cut down the dead timber and do all that stuff, too. I support, I, I appreciate and thank Bob for, you know, he, he contacted me this morning and put together this all, you know, by himself and it's, he did a great job and I just want to thank Bob for that.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, well, let's call the question then, all in favor. And that's carried. Okay, all right, we're going into mayor and council reports.
Um, haven't done too much the last month. I kind of, um, hit a little bit of all with some health stuff, but I'm bouncing back and they're figuring me out, but I am looking forward to going to the library meeting next week and it's, it's just a pleasure to be here today.
Awesome.
So, so glad to be with you guys.
Counsel Rich.
Uh, through the chair yet, Silga, catch up with council, I've been getting a lot of calls about a lot of different things going in town. Also want to put a shout out to PW and Jake DeWitt for a great ball tournament that happened this weekend and your guys did amazing and gals, folks. Um, everybody had so much great feedback about the ball tournament and businesses were super happy, everybody had a great time, weather wasn't perfect, but a great thing and we've got another ball tournament coming up on the twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, uh with twelve ladies teams coming in, so please try to get out there to watch. And then again, just a huge thanks um to staff, our C M P and our mayor for dealing with the bridge. Uh, so that was a little bit of a crazy couple forty eight hours, but uh Sycamore's did what they do and we pulled it out and appreciate it.
Counselor Bushel?
Through the chair. Um, I apologize about Silga. I uh my boss had other intentions for me to uh change the plans. It was short notice. And I apologize I didn't make Silga. I did attend the uh May eighth uh Sycamore's Trail Planning Committee with Richard and his his team. And Adrian from the Shushaw Trail Lines. Um, there was a a comment about a meeting coming up in um. Oh, with highways in regards to uh some planning uh for the trails of of Sycamore's. And I'm wondering, I think it was from a senior project manager in 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 Burnaby. In regards to meeting with staff to talk about uh transportation modes in Sycamore's. So I just wondered if, Darryl, you've heard of that, or maybe Nicole, have you guys heard of that meeting that's supposed to happen? It's supposed to be. I'll send you it. I just I just received it and they're talking about an onsite tour on June third and fourth.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so Richard wanted to, you know, just maybe touch base with uh you and some of the initiatives that they're working on and. And Adrian, so I just wanted to know if you if you would have time to contact him. So that would be good. And then what else? Um, oh, I attended the uh meet and greet last night for the uh for mayor and council. That was uh that was interesting. Um, yeah, we had a few, you know, few people that had some concerns and uh it was a good evening. And uh that's basically about it. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Bailey?
I attended the meet and greet last night. Fun time had by all. Um, I felt it was uh. People were were happy this year, so that's great. Um. The uh I attended Silga. Uh, I'm sorry, I was going to say something else there, but I but I cut myself off. Um. Finish it out here, you have by that way. Anyways, I attended Silga, really good news. Silga, all of the um, all of our resolutions passed and uh. Think a lot of them had a lot of very um wide support amongst municipalities and it really resonated with a lot of the stuff that we were saying. So I think that was a very successful conference that we had this year once again. And um, yeah, just a lot of constituent calls about a lot of different things. Obviously, this week. People were quite concerned about um uh the closure of the bridge, so thank you very much for the the mayor. Spending a lot of time on the phone and figuring um what was a fairly tricky situation out, helping be a part of that. Um, certainly was, I'll just say something on that. People were extremely concerned about that and concerned about. The message that was sending in terms of how we um. We deal with those situations because um from my point of view, it it was not a uh was not a legal closure of the highway. And I think there was a lot of people in in uh very concerned in the community about that. And I certainly hope that we're going to be able to have some further discussions with our partners about that and how that's impacted Sycamore's. I think it's an important thing to to bring up, um because it didn't, it it negatively impacted a lot of people. Um, and and certainly people can see um their point of view on it as well. But I think the other side of it has to be uh communicated as well in terms of the impact of our community. So anyways, all I have to say on that.
Thanks, and I'll just jump the last couple of days as well and just so that our community knows for those that are online and and this, you know. And that's how fast mayor and council worked. You know what? The highway was shut down. We had, we got the information we needed, we had a huddle, everyone said, let's, let's do what we can, let's take it up the, you know, up the chain and let's work at it. So, you know, so that's what, that's what we did. That's how we got um attention. I think that if we hadn't uh taken those steps, I'm not sure that it would have been resolved yet. So, and we were fortunate because um Victoria's in session right now, so we hit some key people that were in the room. And so, and I think that was, that was a big help. So our, you know, our parliamentary secretary, Steve. Um, I I want to send a shout out to him because I think that um he was definitely in support of Sycamore's and talking to his colleagues there, so. Um, yeah, I'm glad that this has been resolved and onward and upward. Um, I'm currently working with us, myself and staff are working with the the president and CEO of Interior Health. We've had two years of not being able to get into conversations about the the lab. So in the next, probably next week, and I've kind of given them a, let us know if you can do this or not, because we need to move on. So they are right now having some serious conversations, so hopefully in the next week or so, we'll know about the lab coming into um. Our medical center, so that's that's fingers crossed news. Um, as Ian mentioned, Silga resolutions were passed, our three Silga resolutions were passed. Now I'd like to just pop out there um, starting to work on a catching release. Um, resolution that we can start, you know, for the next, even for U B C M, moving into F C M next. So I think that that's something that we should start looking at and how we word that and frame that. So we can move it forward and and get loud because we all know and, you know, and it's it's proving itself. If you're not going to jump in and make noise, then you're not going to get the attention that you need. So you need, we are figuring out quickly how who to talk to and how to get there and I am grateful because um. Sycamore's is is a a very nice community. We are, we deal with things respectfully, so we get. So we get, you know, the respect back and the attention back. So people are calling us back, so that's great. Um, back to the resolutions, there was thirty eight resolutions. And I think out of the thirty eight, they were all passed, but the common theme was provincial download. And communities want support. That was literally, and I I think Ian, you and Siobhan can agree, that was literally the theme. Like, come on, you want us to do all this stuff? Give us some help. So everything basically passed that they were, it was, it was an interesting, for me, it was an interesting batch of resolutions. Because I've never sat through resolutions that were all passed, so and, you know, and only I think one was close and it passed. So um, that was, yeah, it was a really good um Silga. Uh, last week I attended uh C S R D Governance Class, which was really good, just a refresher and. Basically what my role is as an elected official and stay in my lane. Okay, we had, Dean and I had a um a meeting with the R C M P Special Department. I can't remember their exact needs. Or exact name, and that was a letter that came from U B C M saying that, you know what, um, we've got your, you know. Um, we talked to you at U B C M, so if you want to set up a meeting, so we did. And um, we talked about our needs with our growing community and our tourism and our our bridge construction and our lake patrol. And all of those things in the community that that we need, that not we need, but Murray needs support on. So that stuff is, it's starting to take shape and we've got another meeting next week, I think, as well. Have C S R D tomorrow. It's like, just don't have enough meetings. So anyway, that's what I've been up to. And I just want to um thank our community for their patience and understanding in the last couple of days. Um. I and I and I do want them to know that when things like this come up, we are not. Sitting by watching it happen. We are literally in the trenches trying to figure out how to make it all come back together again. So um I thank council again for all the good work that that we did and that it was a short blockade. So, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions from the gallery?
I don't see any hands up online.
Okay, wow.
Oh, we do have Counselor Beach online and it looks like she just unmuted. Counselor Beach.
Yeah, can I speak? Do you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if it was working. Uh, yes, I I have been absent, as you know, for the last month. I'm still in Sweden, soon. Soon flying home uh tomorrow, actually. Um, so I'll be back uh next week, but um. I just want to thank the council uh for all of the, all of the work that they've put in and uh. Wow, impressive uh progress in lots of areas and just a great response to. To all the stuff that's that's coming down, going on, so thank you so much and I'm. I'm looking forward to to getting back there now and and uh being part of it all, so. Great work.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Beach, and you travel, safe travels.
Yeah.
We'll see, we'll see you soon.
Yeah, sure will. Bye.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to call the committee of whole meeting to uh adjourn at. Two forty five, May Wednesday, May fourteenth. Can I get a mover? Counselor Bushel, Counselor Rich, all in favor? And we've got fifteen minutes, so in camera.